I call this March 11, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item we have is the approval of the minutes of the February 25, 2019 regular meeting.
Madam Chair, a move that we approve the meeting minutes of February 25, 2019.
Second?
Motion's amped and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. Okay, it's past the hour of 7:00 PM. We have Senator James Eldredge, who's not going to actually be here, Senator Harriet L. Chandler, State Representative Danielle Gregoire, and State Representative Harold Naughton. Discussion of legislative priorities. John, you want to set the table?
Yeah, so first of all, welcome. And on the front end, before we even get started, I just want to thank all of you for the work that you do and the assistance that your individual staffs have provided. They've always been responsive to our questions and concerns and, you know, it's just important that you understand from us that the responsiveness and getting information back to us is very much appreciated. So, this is our annual meeting. We love to invite you guys in and typically we'll send you a letter with our legislative priorities. For the last couple of years, those priorities, you know, have not changed. Yeah, we're seeking additional Chapter 90 money, additional special education, circuit breaker funding, and we'd love to see some OPEB reform. Well, we already got our Chapter 90 money, so that's done. OPEB, I understand, there's no political will at the moment. The governor is not submitting anything, and I don't believe anything's coming through on the legislature. So, and sped circuit breaker is habitually underfunded because of revenue constraints. So, I do want to get on record, those are still our three top priorities, but given the revenue consensus hearing on December 5th, we understand that things are not going to get better. They might be getting a little bit tighter. So, given that, we thought tonight we'd spend a little bit of time talking about two things that are in motion, that are of interest to us. One is potential Chapter 70 reform, and the other is our composting, proposed composting legislation, something near and dear to Senator Chandler's heart. So, with regard to the Chapter 70 formula, and I gave you the handout that the board has, the Foundation Budget Review Committee, which concluded in October of 2015 with their recommendations, in terms of how to modify and update the rather outdated and very complicated and convoluted Chapter 70 formula, particularly with regard to the foundation budget. Also in the handout, there are four pieces of legislation that are out there at the moment. There's the Promise Act, there's the Governor's Bill, H-70, and then there's another House Bill, 3195. So, it appears that in this legislative round, there's going to be some action with regard to Chapter 70. So, for those at home in the board, just to refresh your memory, you know, about $5 million, roughly, that we get in state aid, about 80 percent of that comes in the form of Chapter 70. So, anything that happens to the Chapter 70 funding formula is something that we're very concerned about. So, what we're hoping tonight you can do is talk about these different proposed legislation that's out there. Is there any that you are in favor of or planning to endorse? And to the extent possible, can you tell us what the impacts might be for Northborough? So, through the chair if that might start the conversation.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to start, Mr.?
Sure. Thank you, Senator. John, thank you. And by way of kind of following your comments, and I'm not afraid to admit that as I've now entered my 24th year representing this town.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, see? You're never good at math. Twenty-fifth year, the senator and I came into the House together before she crossed the Elysian fields to the Senate. We were actually seatmates our first year, our first couple of terms in the House. Northborough, 25 years, has consistently been at the top of my list of communicative towns, accessible, and a town that is always willing to talk. So, I appreciate, I was sharing that with Selectman Hirsch, person Hirsch, earlier tonight at my office hours. And we always know where you stand, and that's not a bad thing. Sometimes it leads to some tough conversations, but we always know where you stand, and you're always straight with us. So, from me personally, I appreciate that. What I'm hoping for this year, as far as education reform is, is that we take the lessons we learned last year, especially at the end of the session, where we came very, very close to coming up with a reform, education reform piece, a Chapter 70 funding reform piece, but unfortunately, with the stress of the end of the session and, you know, some other internal stresses, we weren't able to accomplish that. But that, as I, you know, another story I was mentioning, that doesn't mean all that work that was done last year by both the House and the Senate is lost. It means that we'll take that and we'll run with it. The governor's filed his piece, the Senate has a piece, and we have a piece on the House side. Speaker DeLeo just had all of House leadership at Worcester State University on Friday in a conversation led by the Vice Chair of the Committee on Education, Representative Paul Tucker from Salem. Very in-depth explanation of the House approach to this. And for your purposes, and one of your priorities, both, all three bills, but both bills offer further assistance with circuit breaker and with special education costs. And in the bills we had last year that ultimately were unsuccessful did as well. So, I think you've seen commitment on all three levels, the House, the Senate, and the administration, to address the heavy burden on your communities from special education. Obviously, I'm a House member, be supporting the House piece, but I think we'd all be considered failures if we don't, consider ourselves failures, if we don't take the pieces of the bill we almost made happen at the end of the session last year and bring it to the table, but especially on special education and circuit breaker costs. I think you'll be seeing a formula which will be more realistic and provide more to the towns on that level. I do have some comments at some point in this discussion. It's related, but it's also related to everything else as far as revenue streams are concerned. But, okay, I will say it. John and I had this discussion a little bit earlier. Long-term, the real solutions to these issues are going to come from some new revenue streams. And we're going to have to have some very, very difficult discussions on a statewide level, and I would look to the Mass Municipal Association and to boards of selectmen and regional groups to lead that discussion. Chiefs associations, fire, police, public safety, environmental organizations. We tried to do it with the gas tax several years ago, and we were crucified for it, and it was pulled back at the ballot. But until these much broader issues, and I'm speaking for myself here, I'm not trying to pull my two colleagues into this.
Thank you.
But until we have those very, very difficult discussions, be it transportation, be it housing, be it education, we're going to be having similar conversations every year as we have for the last 24, 25 that I've been around. And I know we're looking at, and I want to go off track, but a lot of it's tied in. And the governor filed a housing, affordable housing proposal, Mayor Walsh is talking about it for Boston. You know, that's Mayor Walsh. That's affecting us out here. This congestion that we see on the highways every day, that is getting closer and closer and longer and longer waits to us here, it's all tied in. It's tied into affordable housing, it's tied into transportation. And that, and the money that has to go there is money that can't, you know, go to education. So, I'm getting a little far afield, but getting a little more focused. I think we will learn from all of the hard work that was done by many people last year and bring a successful education reform piece to the table, so, on that issue. That's all right, I didn't mean to go so far afield.
That's all right.
That's okay. I have a couple of additional points regarding this specific proposal, if that's okay. So, I'm not sure, and I'd like to have a specific conversation with you or perhaps someone from the school system regarding the impact of the change in how the low income is identified. From my other two communities, I've heard that that is having a major impact on them moving forward, and obviously from other more challenged financially communities, that's having a huge impact on them. So, that's something that's come from the federal government, so we're looking at a way to try to reconfigure that so we can move forward at a way that's a better calculation for our cities and towns like we had previously, because obviously, if you have fewer low-income people because of the way that it's calculated, you have fewer dollars that are coming into you from both the federal and the state government. And then the other point that I brought up at the meeting that we had on Friday was the charter school reimbursement formula and the charter school funding formula, and it's my strong belief, and it always has been, that we should not move forward on anything that impacts our Charter 70 and our Chapter 70 and our school funding formulas unless we address the disparity in the current charter school funding formula, which I know has somewhat of an impact here in Northborough, obviously not as much as it does in Marlborough, but I think it's something that's very inequitable, and I think it's something that deserves to be addressed if we're addressing education funding as a whole, which it sounds like in all three of these proposals we are planning to do moving forward. I believe we need to adjust the charter school funding formula. That having been said, to Representative Naughton's point, and where I've come from a different place on revenue in the past, the bottom line is that whether you're talking about the Promise Act from the Senate, which has no, as far as I know, dollar number attached to it, and definitely no stream of revenue, or the Governor's Bill, which has a $200 million price tag attached to it, with also no identified stream of revenue, or the House Bill, which is, as far as I can see, the most conservative, we need revenue to make these things happen. And whether we're, with the kind of investment that we're talking about, that I think you all have been asking us for, for year after year after year, we're talking about revenue, whether it's another certain amount on the sales tax or somewhere, we have to get creative because it's not just a matter of moving money around anymore. We can't take money out of Chapter 90 and put it in Chapter 70 because then it puts you in a worse spot on your roads and bridges. So, I do agree, despite my reluctance in the past and continued reluctance, quite frankly, to raise any significant amount of revenue. I think in order to make this happen, it's a reality. I can't vote to spend more money on education and not vote to fund it. I just, I don't have it in my conscience to do that. So, moving forward, I think it's something that people should be aware of. In addition, regarding the OPEB, I know we've talked about it before, but I've got a new committee assignment this year. I'm chairing the Committee on State Administration and Regulatory Oversight, and I believe any issues relating to that would be, or any issues relating to OPEB would be coming before my committee. So, I will be looking to try to see what we have in front of us for legislation and what we could do to try to alleviate some of the issues that you've been talking about here. Obviously, it's statewide, and it's an issue that the MMA has brought up time and again. But if we can do something specific for Northborough legislatively, that would help, I would be more than willing to step out and try to help you do that. So, I think it's something that we might be able to work on moving forward. I don't want to make any promises, but we certainly can try.
Appreciate that.
I guess it's my turn. We have a new Chair of Education in the Senate. He is very good at negotiating. He's had a lot of experience doing it. You know that the two points on which the House and the Senate disagreed, which stopped the whole education bill, my colleagues to my left and right can certainly step in and challenge me on this, but the two points were the fact that in the final bill, it appeared that there would be no mention as a factor of the income status of the people involved, and of the fact that they were English language learners. So, those were the two issues. And as someone who represents a large urban area as well as six towns, that's a real problem. It's a real problem. I think they'll work it out. I think they will have a chance to work it out now without, we started early. I think that they will be able to hopefully find an issue. In terms of circuit breaker funding, I'm in agreement that the special education circuit breaker should be funded at 100 percent. It really has to. I've discussed this with the Senate Ways and Means Chair. I've encouraged the Chair to make this a priority for the Senate, and we're requesting $353 million, which is the 100 percent estimate, and I'm committed to working toward full funding. It will make a huge difference to you. I know that. I came into this, to this position knowing that that made a huge difference. I'm sort of surprised that among the many questions you've asked, and you have asked many questions, you have many issues, why isn't transportation one of them? Is there some reason, John? It doesn't, I don't understand it. Why isn't transportation one of your concerns?
Well, transportation is a concern, I mean, our top priority is our Chapter 90 funding, which is our infrastructure roadway.
Right.
But as far as regional transportation, it's that last mile, as I'm sure you've heard. So, you know, we don't have a train, a T-stop in Northborough.
You don't have a train? You don't have a bus? You don't have, I mean, if people wanted to, want to live in the beautiful town of Northborough, and it is a beautiful town, they can't live here without driving, being able to drive their own cars. And frankly, if people are elderly, and I understand that well, if people, as people age, they're not able to drive a car anymore, and there should be pressure from this town and several of the others because we are really lacking in our issues and our ability to get from anywhere in Central Mass to anywhere else in Central Mass. And this is, this just isn't right. And you have a loud, clear voice. I mean, there is no town that I represent that has a louder, clearer voice or are better planners than Northborough. And you should be thinking about how to put that and make that a part of your needs.
Well, if I may, we have. It's something that's being addressed through the master plan, it's something that we take up regularly with the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency. The reality is, like everything that we do, we have priorities. And so, unfortunately, if we can't educate the kids in the school or
I understand.
or maintain our roads, it doesn't help us to have a regional transportation bus driving over a road that needs to be repaired, so.
Your drivers, yeah.
We're definitely, I mean, it's definitely an issue for the region as a whole, and we have taken it up and discussed it. Like everything else, it's resources.
I understand that, but you're, the people who live here, many of whom work in Boston, it's a real problem, and it's getting to be a worse problem with each passing day.
I agree.
So, that I, I hope that maybe we can convene something to bring Central Massachusetts together and to talk about how we can operate more efficiently. This is, there are all kinds of problems, as you can imagine, with transportation, and that would be asking you to get involved in yet another problem.
We're involved, we're involved through the 495 Partnership.
Right.
And they've done extensive work in terms of regional transportation, which if you haven't seen that, I'd be happy to forward that information. But we work through Central Mass Regional Planning, 495 Partnership, and there's a lot of great information about what our needs are, and I think the region's been pretty clear about articulating their needs, but I think there's been a little lack of ability to fund and to implement those at the state level, frankly.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just thinking, you're so far ahead of everybody else in everything else. So, I agree with what both of my colleagues have to say. We have, as you probably know, last year was the first year that we seemed to have some money to spend, and this year, we have reached, in December, we started to fall behind. We did not meet our budget projections, our budget projections of December, of January, or of February. That's not a very good sign, and we're concerned about it. We're starting to draw back a little bit, as you can see. We, I'd love to tell you that we're going to be able to do good things. I hope we can. They're hoping to make up for that deficit in March, April, and May. April is our largest collection month, but if they don't, if we don't, if we don't make up for it, we have a problem on our hands. And I think this is why you're hearing from both my colleagues that this is, this is a very serious problem, and we have to address it. And that's why you hear revenue, revenue, revenue. We should not be doing anything without having a sustained revenue source attached to it. Unfunded mandates, as you so rightly agree, they're bad. They're bad for everybody, but we've got to figure out how to do this better.
So, through the chair if I may, and I certainly don't want to monopolize the conversation. I do want to acknowledge we have Greg Martin out, the incoming superintendent here as well.
Congratulations.
Who can speak to some of these education issues in far more detail than we can. But I guess one overarching comment that I would make that I think the board and the public needs to be cognizant of is, all of these bills that are coming forward for education reform, none of them have designated or revenue attached to them. And I've heard estimates between $1.2 billion and $1.4 billion of implementation to do this, and the low-income factor is a big piece of it. Unfortunately, that probably isn't going to benefit Northborough, but when you're looking at those numbers, and you're talking about a revenue scenario that you just outlined for us, and we're talking about passing this legislation without designated revenue source, it means it has to come from somewhere. And frankly, for a town like Northborough, my concern is that one or more of these pass, you have to fund it, and it's got to come from somewhere. So, unless you are willing and able to come up with new revenue sources, then we're probably looking at other programs that are important to Northborough, not just from public education, but it'll impact police, fire, DPW, other grant programs. And I think that's probably the biggest thing that the board needs to be cognizant of, that this education reform is in play right now at the state level, if implemented. And again, nobody's arguing against public education as a, as a public good. We all agree on that. But the money's going to flow to Boston, Springfield, Worcester, because that's where the need is, but it has to come from somewhere. So, I don't know if you can speak to how, in your positions, how you intend to implement something like this and come up with a revenue? That's the concern.
Right.
That's why that's the topic for tonight.
Absolutely.
And that's our concern.
Yes. So.
I didn't know if you wanted to?
Sure. On behalf of the Northborough School Committee and the Northwestern South Carolina Regional School Committee, I'd like to thank you for your advocacy for public education. We are in full support of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations that were made in 2015 specifically around funding the base aid, fully funding the base aid, making sure the factors for economically disadvantaged English language learners are a part of the funding formula, as well as looking at the rising cost of health care and our retiree benefits. I mean, most importantly, special education and circuit breaker, the rising costs to educate all students, including special education students, is having a significant impact on our budgeting. The Governor's budget projects a 70 percent reimbursement rate for circuit breaker, and FY '19, we were reimbursed at 72 percent. So, that's a difference. So, again, we're in full support of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations. I think it's a step forward, but the faster we can accelerate the recommendations, the better. And the other thing that is very important to the district is regional school transportation reimbursement. That's something that we rely on and benefit from, and something that we look forward to continue to support. And lastly, I'll just comment on what helps us the most is predictability, that the more predictability we have in terms of when we're creating our budgets, the easier it is to budget and forecast and plan, and to be mindful about what kids need. And some years are easier than others, but whatever you can do to bring predictability to reimbursement rates and making sure the funding formula adequately funds public education is greatly appreciated.
Well, I think it's fair to say that we're going to have to get the funding for this from somewhere, and the silence that you're hearing over here, the quiet, that when you start talking about this, means that we're going to have to raise the money somehow. We can't put this in a position of an unfunded mandate. I mean, this is, that would be crazy. So, at some point, we're going to have to either raise the money by taxing more, or we are going to have to, we can't bond this out. So, it will have to be, I would assume, unless my...
No, I mean, I addressed it in my initial comments, that you are likely going to see a significant proposal for some type of revenue raising. You know, we like to use the word revenue, return taxes, okay?
Right.
But in this legislative session, I mean, the time has come, and we're at the tipping point, be it for education, for transportation, for the environment. So, everyone, it all ties together, and the stakeholders here, be it school committees, superintendents, select boards, city councils, people concerned with environmental issues or agriculture issues, this goes across the board, and it all flows into one. And we can't do it alone. And I'll use the example again. We took it on the chin when we passed the gas tax a few years ago, and it got pulled back by referendum.
We didn't pass the gas tax, if you remember.
Yeah, we did.
But we did, but, yeah.
But then the referendum pulled it back. Because the opposition, you know, just wouldn't, you know, just outspent us and, you know, made us look like liberal tax and spenders. So, this is something, and we spoke at that time when we spoke to stakeholders and the interest groups, saying that you need to get out there at the tip of the spear and tell people out in the communities. And I get it, money, yeah, the economy is supposed, is going gangbusters supposedly, but there's still a lot of people in tough shape out there, living paycheck to paycheck and worrying about, you know, paying their fuel, food, property taxes, et cetera. And we've got to take them into account. And I mean, these, like, my friends here will tell you, I've never been a big tax and spender myself, but, you know, at this stage of the game, it's a conversation that has to be held if we want to maintain the quality of life that we can see is furthering around the edges in our education, in our roadways, in our environmental programs. So, we, you know, we can, we can talk so much, you know, maybe preaching, but, you know, we're, we need support out there. We need other people, you know, carrying the spears on this because we're looked at as, as, you know, the trust level there on a proposal coming out from us on taxation, whether or not, unless we start getting some support. I mean, I've been talking to the speaker, we're in dire need, I see the chief over there, I'm going to be speaking to the chiefs on Wednesday, of a public safety bond bill. We have a lot of police departments, fortunately, Northborough does well, a lot of, Chairman of the Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security. We have a lot of police departments around the Commonwealth that are in, and fire stations that are in tough shape, that are really stressed hard to provide the public safety needed in our communities. That's a conversation we're going to have. I'm going to be having that conversation with the police chiefs on Wednesday at their regional meeting. So, I think, I think I've made my point, I'm sorry, but...
I think it's important to point out, Hank, that that gas tax increase, which passed the House and the Senate, which I admittedly did not support, was targeted to support Chapter 90 investment.
Right.
Because we had heard you, and that was the way that we tried to solve that problem, and then it was voted down at the ballot. So, it was, it was a way of trying to get at that issue, and unfortunately, it was unsuccessful.
But if you're, if you're sincere in your feeling that the need is there, and Superintendent, we look to you because you are the leader of the educational community here, we need support. We need support, and we need you to join with us because this is not going to be an easy fight.
John's exactly right. You know, we, whatever the three, one of the three current proposals we pass, or if it's, if it's a consolidated proposal, a meeting in the middle of the road, unless it's got a revenue stream attached to it, it's going to come from someplace else. It's going to push down, and it, you know, it's a pyrrhic victory if it becomes another unfunded mandate pushed down on the communities without a revenue stream attached to it.
It can't happen, it can't happen, I'm going to...
So, I guess we're, we're, we're asking for your help and your help as much as you're asking, you know, for our help, so.
Thank you. Before we go into composting, any questions, comments, Leslie?
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for being here this evening. We really appreciate it. Aside from the revenue issues, were there other sticking points in terms of why this didn't do well as far as debt reform? What are other things, and will those issues, how can those issues be resolved so that this continues on, hopefully successfully?
I think there was a basic, and I don't mean to, again, for, I wasn't on the conference committee, so I have limited knowledge of what went on in the conference committee, but I think there was a basic, the Senator referred to, I think, I think there was a basic philosophical difference of opinion in the two issues that the Senator mentioned, which, with, again, not speaking, with a change in the Senate Chair of Education, perhaps there could be some further headway on that. there could be some further headway on that. I don't want to speak of what I don't know.
No, well, I think it's fairly clear that there was agreement on almost everything else. And what the, what the difference was, is the senate felt very strongly that the issue of, the issue of income makes a difference. Remember, we represent approximately 179,000 people. Many of us represent cities as well. That is not necessarily true with house members. They don't necessarily have to represent a city. And many of us who represent cities have problems, concerns about English speakers. I mean, that's a problem. And to be quite frank with you, I think there was agreement on just about everything else, but this is a philosophical difference, a philosophical difference. And we have to get over that. I'm hopeful that with Senator Jason Lewis as the chairman of education, everything, by the way, is in that promise bill. Every single thing that was recommended by the committee was, is in that promise bill. There's no funding attached to it. That's the problem. We get very timid about funding because funding is taxes, and we hear a very negative, you know, negative feeling about that. I'm hopeful that we will do this. It should not be put, it should be, we can't afford to keep kicking this can down the road because we've kicked it just about as far as it can go. And it's not only in the area of education, it's in every area. We're afraid to tax, we're afraid to add that tax, a penny, five cents, whatever, but we're afraid to do it. And we have to listen to you. I hope today we might hear more from you about your feelings on this. This is probably one of the first bills that we will be doing, one of the major bills, because this was kind of pulled out at the last moment. And you need this bill, I mean, you need this bill as do most every other community in the Commonwealth. We have 351 of them, and we all need it. We need it now, we can't wait until, and we can't go through this at the last moment again. So I'd like to stop talking, and I'd like to hear what you, the members of the select board feel about this. Will you support us? Won't you support us? Because if you won't support us, that gives us an idea of what we have ahead of us. If you will support us, that gives us an idea too of what you want us to do. You're the one that we turn to in a matter like this. We're not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I really want to know what you think and how, what you would do to make this happen.
I think John would like to speak.
Yeah, if I may, because that's an excellent question, and there's a very reasonable response to that, and that is, look, in theory and in practice, we all support the promise bill.
Yep.
What we're concerned with is the same thing that you are, which is how is it going to be funded? And so until you tell us how it's going to be funded, is it going to be taken from police, fire, DPW, and everywhere else, or is it going to be funded with additional taxes? But until we know how it's going, how the plan is going to be funded and implemented, then we can tell you how, at least I would be able to tell you then, how I can support it. I had a very long conversation with Senator Sonia Cheng Diaz about this at the MMA's Municipal Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee, in that I said the same thing to her that I'm saying to you, which is, everybody thinks and believes in public education as a true public good. The question comes down to how is it going to be implemented? And sitting here today, you can't tell us that.
Right.
So, and that's, that's difficult, and so it's difficult for us, at least for me, to tell you how I feel about that.
John, would you, and I hate to put you on the spot and ask you like...
I'm okay putting you on the spot.
Okay.
I'll be telling you, you'll always know what I'm thinking. Ask anybody, I'll tell you exactly what I'm thinking.
Would you support a tax?
Again, depends on what the tax is, how it's implemented, is it broad-based?
What would you support? I mean, you're looking to us for leadership in this, and I understand that, but it goes back to, what would you accept? What can we go back to the people who are going to be, and I'm certainly in a position, all of us are in a position to go back to the people who will be dealing with this and say, you know, I can be comfortable knowing that my towns are going to be willing to accept this. The city of Worcester, I know will accept this, but what about you? That's, that's the important thing.
Well, I'll tell you this, my job for the Board of Selectmen is to research issues, problems, and opportunities.
And you do them.
And to frame them up and to make a recommendation. I'd like to see, that's your job, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but that's the legislature's job. So come up with something, propose it, and then we can comment on it. But I don't think it's fair to ask us to solve the state's problems or to come up with the solutions. We would need, we would need some, we'd need some framework in order to logically comment. And I think that's a fair, fair comment.
That is fair, John. I guess I, the only thing I'm saying is, I'm not sure, first of all, am I hearing you correctly to say that you would support some sort of tax, some sort? It could be...
Yeah, I'll say...
But some sort. If I know that you will even deal with that, I think we can go on from there.
Again, in my position for the Mash Municipal Association on the Finance Advisor Committee, we have consistently supported things like, like the gas tax. The MMA got behind that.
You did, and thank you.
We voted, we supported it with you, and it didn't pass. And I think the MMA, and at least my limited role on the MMA, we very consistently have supported new revenues because we realize it's a zero-sum game. Now, exactly what those revenues consist of and how they get implemented, that's up for a lot of debate and discussion. That's not our job to frame that, and when that gets framed, then you'll see the MMA, and you'll see certainly for the Board of Selectmen, and again, I don't want to speak for them, they're intelligent people, but to ask them to kind of come up with something on the fly here, I, that, we need to see, working with you and the MMA and all of the municipalities, to frame something up that makes sense that we can all support. Until we see it, that's tough to get there.
Am I getting it correct? Am I getting the right vibe that...
You need more resources. That's clear.
You're, you're saying that to me, which means...
I'm saying that. I'm not speaking for the board.
All right, I'd like to hear that.
But I'm saying that from the MMA's perspective.
Jason?
Yeah, John took the words out of my mouth, just the notion that it's a zero-sum game. In this community, I think we've been managed very well. I think we've done a terrific job working within the financial framework that we have with limitations of Prop 2 and 1/2, with limitations on state aid, which in real terms has been declining over this period of time, over this last 15, 20 years. We find ourselves faced with these challenges. A good one is health care, where we finally got some opportunity through some local control granted to revise our medical plans in order to be more cost-effective in how we're handling both our current employees and retirees. We're faced with the OPEB challenge, where that's just a snowball running downhill, and as, you know, we're trying to make a dent in that, we've created a trust fund, we're making annual allocations to that. Chapter 90 funding, we've done a pavement management study in our town, we know exactly the condition of our roads, we know how much money we need just to maintain that status quo. And in terms of state aid, the state aid isn't giving us sufficient funds to maintain that status quo, and we're finding resources within our own budget to shore that up, to try to keep ourselves from falling even further behind than where, where we are. So it's, it's certainly the case that we're walking the tightrope. And when one issue seems as though it's, you know, becoming a dress, another issue pops up. And even last year, revising our health care once again to consolidate into a single provider and get some cost savings out of that, which has paid some dividends this year. I agree with you, revenue is the issue. We can't just keep moving boxes around on the table and, you know, not satisfying what's the known need in all of these areas. So if, if revenue is the issue and if solutions that generate revenue is what is needed for education, for roadways, then I think you need to take a strong stance. I think you need to make those proposals and at least give us some options so that we can understand how that's going to work within our own community, within our own financial structure, and try to work with you in order to accomplish that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think we all would like to work with you, we just want to know what we're working with, what you're coming forward with, which of these bills are coming forward, what you're proposing to do for revenue. Like you, the town doesn't have unlimited funds either. You know, we're constantly looking for revenue too, and unfortunately, for taxpayers in Northborough, a lot of times it ends up being increased property tax. So revenue's an issue for all of us, so, but we know that you, we do recognize that you have an issue. So, and Leslie?
Yeah, first of all, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to discuss it like this. I think this is a healthy discussion. And I think probably a lot of it is what's there not to like, really, in terms of the ed reform and so forth. But, you know, and I think it could be too easy to say, of course, let's raise taxes, we need more revenue, but I think we need more structure around that, maybe some historical information about what has worked in the past in Massachusetts, what might be a reasonable thing to try, what have you heard from other communities as far as what they might support or what they've mentioned to you, and then come back to us, and we have a little bit more structure around it as opposed to feeling like I'm saying something in a little bit of a vacuum at the moment. So.
Thank you. Anything else? Tim?
I think, just my concern, just as a citizen, when I hear new taxes, those taxes get allocated to the budget, and they're raised with the promise that they're going to go into the promise fund, and then down the road, those change, these things get unfunded. So some sort of commitment, knowing that the funds and the taxes that are being raised are going to be used for specific things that will help the communities, I think will help us quite a bit for us as a board to support that, knowing, A, you're raising, you know, fictitiously, you're going to raise the gas tax, but that's just not going to go into a fund that the state is going to true through for other uses. It actually is going to be used for...
Well, the gas tax is right there in the legislation, was committed to Chapter 90. So it's...
Yeah, I'm just going forward.
Tried to do it and, you know, went in for the layup, got the elbow and the nose. You know, another thing I want to put on your radar screen, unrelated to this, but it is related to this because it's all related, because it's only, the pot's only so much big. Senator Chandler and I are on a task force dealing with revenue issues for the University of, again, revenue, or revenue slash service issues, the University of Massachusetts Medical Center and its constituent hospitals in the area, in my district, Clinton Hospital. We have a massive mass health and Medicaid problem in funding in this Commonwealth on both ends. It's growing exponentially, it's 40% of our revenue now, yet nursing homes and our hospitals are telling us that their reimbursement just isn't keeping up with what they need to operate. Now that, does that affect you? Is that part of this conversation?
Of course it does.
Not technically, but it does. Certainly affects probably family members and family members and people in the audience here, but it also affects the bottom line of, that's, you know, we've decided we want to provide health care for people in this Commonwealth. That is a huge, huge portion of the budget that we're also looking for a resolution on. So.
We are basically subsidizing in 2007 rates. You know, you can't do that for very long. You just can't do that for very long. I must tell you, I should ask selectwoman Hersch if she would like to say, because this is the first time we've ever engaged in this kind of conversation. And frankly, it's the first time I've ever heard, every time we've ever come to you with a tax, I feel like we're going to walk out of here limping and wounded.
Well, Jeff's not here anymore.
No. But, but we, we, we sort of, it's almost a bad word, we're afraid to say it. As I started to talk about it today, I thought, oh my God, what am I getting into? But it's, it's the truth that we're dealing with, and we've got to know that if we come back to you with a plan, that you're not going to think that we've lost our minds and that, you know, this is a terrible thing. That's the, that's what we've always gotten. And this is the first time I feel that you understand that there's a problem and that we need to work, work it out together because you need to, you know, you need to work with us on this. We can't pass anything without you.
Ready to go on to composting?
I think so.
Composting.
Oh, composting. That's a favorite subject of mine, as you know.
So just by way of background for the folks in the audience, if you may be listening, so the town of Northborough, working through primarily through, initially through Senator Chandler's office, and then through the House with Danielle and Hank getting behind sponsorship of the bill, was Senate Bill 407. And Senate Bill 407 was designed to centrally move composting operations from the Department of Agricultural Resources to the Department of Environmental Protection. Really, the point of it, that particular language is less important than what the intent was. The intent was to remove the agricultural exemption for large-scale, what I refer to as commercial composting operations in residential neighborhoods. So that, that bill made it all the way through conference committee and got to the governor, and the governor vetoed it. And I believe he vetoed it because it was the 11th hour, and there just wasn't enough time to explain exactly what it was. And I like to think that, anyway. And so...
You're very charitable.
You're really charitable.
Well, because I want to keep, I want to keep the door open to having another conversation. So working with Senator Chandler's office again, we drafted and proposed legislation, it's Senate Docket 1235, a copy of it's in your packet. This time, we went a little bit more directly at the issue, and I'll just read one line from it. And essentially, this is in dealing with agricultural composting. And under our proposed amendment, and this is to Section 1 of Chapter 21H of Mass General Laws, but it says, "All composting projects and facilities must comply with local zoning, land use, conservation, health ordinances, bylaws, and regulations, including but not limited to requirements regarding setback or separation distances, odors, dust, debris, types and quantities, and source of materials." So basically, what this does is it effectively would remove the agricultural exemption for large-scale commercial composting operations that might want to set up in a residential neighborhood. And I think we have a very long history, and I'm not going to get into that this evening, the board is well aware as our legislative delegation is. But essentially, we've tried every means to mitigate, to negotiate, to work with not only the farms, but the Department of Agricultural Resources. We have testified before them not once, but twice on regulations, which they still have failed to promulgate, which is probably a good thing because we did not care much for the draft regulations that they were bringing forward. We believe that those were going to diminish local input into these types of facilities. So this legislation has been, again, drafted, sponsored, and I guess...
Filed.
And filed, and I guess at this point, we, I don't know if you have comments, but we're hoping that you will enthusiastically support this. This is a very important issue for the Board of Selectmen. They've been on record for literally the last several years trying to address this issue. So I don't know if you have any comments regarding that.
My only comments are that the people who abut the area have been incredibly, incredibly patient, incredibly longstanding patients, in fact. And if, for no other reason than what they live with on a daily basis, particularly in the summer, particularly as when it gets windy, and particularly when it gets heated, when the argument becomes heated between the neighbors and the farmer, I can only say that I think that it belongs in environmental protection. I do not believe it belongs in agricultural resources. I believe that from my heart, and I will work continually. It's my priority to get this done, and I feel very, very strongly about it. I, I'm not as charitable as you are, John, I'm not at all as charitable about this as you are. I feel that you have potential health hazards. As far as I can see, you already have some of the health hazards. This has gone on far too long. And I think that we need to have you come out again, as you did when the bill was heard last year. And we were, we were almost there, we thought last year. We really got awfully close to having it passed. The governor waited until literally the last day before he vetoed the bill. And, you know, we're here to fight another day, as you would say. We're here to fight another day, and we will fight another day, but we need your help again. Legislation can't be done without you. And I'm speaking to the audience here because many of you are neighbors and abutters of this... many of you are neighbors and abutters of this project, and we need you to do exactly what you did last time, it was very important, that's how legislation is accomplished, that's all I can say, that's how legislation is accomplished, and we will work and make sure we can get it done again.
And we thank you for coming forward with this, again.
Thank you.
So, questions from the board? Leslie?
Can you be more specific about what you found helpful, and what you would expect and hope that the neighbors do, and what we can do as a Board of Selectmen, this has been such a longstanding issue, it's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
Yeah.
But you've done all the right things, and we just need to do it again. And I really think that one of the things that needs to be done, that I have more time now, and we can really spend more time on this, one of the things that I'm planning to do is find other communities with the same composting problem, we've talked about this before, and there are other, other communities with that composting issue, and strength in numbers should not be forgotten, and we know that there are other communities. And this time, I'm going to see if we can get them to join us in this. I think that will make a, you know, you almost, this bill almost passed without any of that, it almost passed. As the governor's representative told me, we, we need to see, quote, whether the new regs, the new regulations work. Well, I'm waiting for them, I'm waiting for them, and so are you, they haven't come out yet, that says something, I'm not sure what it says, but you can't keep going on for weeks and months without regulations, that just doesn't happen, shouldn't happen. And I'd like to know why we haven't seen those regulations. I mean, they said, you know, we think that those regulations are strong, we think they're strong enough, but they aren't there! So, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. They think it's strong enough so that we won't need to move this whole thing to environmental protection. We all know that at the core of this is the fact that environmental protections regulations are much stronger than agricultural regulations, that's as simple as it is, and that's why we wanted to go to environmental protection.
You know, Leslie, as, as you know, I think most people know, I've been involved with this since 2011.
Yeah.
2010, when it first started up, and you're right, it's ridiculous to the point of outrageousness, to, you know, to the point where the individual involved is an outlaw, and, you know, we got Martha, I mean, I remember being deployed in Afghanistan and getting, calling, using my limited connectivity to get ahold of Martha Coakley, to find when she was Attorney General, to see where we're at, I mean, to the point where the Attorney General brought actions, to the point where the individual ended up in jail for violating orders, and continues on and on and on. So, it's, and again, it's stakeholders, you need your help when the bills go to the House version we took, the senator's great work, and no pride of author, no shame here, we took it and filed it on the House side as well, House 840, but it'll take a parallel track, and it's the same thing, you need to appear and let the committee members know at the time of hearing the impact upon your lives. As far as an update is concerned, with the other type of enforcement actions that DEP has been trying to take with their limited abilities right now, under the current law, they've got three enforcement actions that they're trying to get taken care of, there was a decision on, one on Friday, yeah, the 7th, on the odor complaints, the administrative law judge found in favor of DEP, so now they have an enforceable order on that. I don't know how much, you know, the wintertime, probably the odors probably aren't as noticeable, but then they're still pending decisions on the turkeys and the fruit and the other detritus that's being brought in there, so while, and these are dual tracks, while we're pursuing the legislation, DEP, and, to an extent, the Attorney General's Office are pursuing legal remedies, and I guess there is some ongoing conversation between Mr. Mackey, the attorney hired by some of the neighbors and the Attorney General's Office, but I would leave him up, leave it up to him to, to brief you on the progress he's made.
Each of you have served, have done exactly what, have done all that you could do, starting with John, who has provided the most incredible trail, it's a paper trail that, with pictures no less, that is incredible, and you just look at that and you can understand it very quickly. The health agent has done a wonderful job, because this becomes a health problem, and the health agent has done a wonderful job. The fact that the select board did a resolution was very helpful, and I would suggest you do it again, I really would suggest you do it again, and I would suggest that any time this is heard, that as many of the, of the select board that can come, do come to the hearing. I know that it's hard during the day, I know there's a problem, we will do our best to try to see if we can move you in and out as quickly as possible. The neighbors have been incredible in coming and speaking wherever, wherever they're called to speak, and they have been marvelous. All of that, all of that, plus the legislators, made it possible for us to get as far as we did. Realize, it passed the House, it passed the Senate, and it was vetoed by the governor at the very last moment. So, you've done an incredible job. Now, six months have passed, eight months have passed, what we need to do is to build up even more momentum and get it done this year, because I don't believe that we have any regulations to see whether the regulations work. They don't exist, I don't, I don't think we have anything to play it against.
If I may, just to the chair, just before you comment, because the regulations are part, so everybody understands, there's two separate things going on here. The Department of Agricultural Resources promulgates rules and regulations pertaining to agricultural composting. They amended those, or plan to amend those regulations, the town stepped in, provided comments, we contacted every other town that had composting issues, including the statewide health association, the MMA, everybody that we could to come to that hearing. We stopped them from, from changing the regulations, which in our opinion would have been more detrimental to the residents and to Northborough. They went back, came back again with another set of proposed regulations, and by the way, if anybody wants our testimony that goes line by line with our issues on, in terms of why we don't believe that the regulations that DAR is promulgating is going to protect residents, I'm happy to provide that, we have packets of information, and I'd love to give it to anybody who wants it. So, they've gone silent, they have never come back with their finished regulations, so they're in limbo. In the interim, we're working through our legislative delegation, we filed legislation that goes at this issue at the enabling legislation point, and I've stressed, and this has been frustrating for residents, in that the town of Northborough does not hold the power, we're not the permitting or the oversight agency to prevent the things that are occurring from continuing. And so, that has to happen at the enabling legislation, and that's what we're doing here, that's what we're talking about, that's what's been filed. Whether or not DAR promulgates their regulations, or whatever they do, becomes irrelevant if this legislation passes, because the legislation says, it doesn't matter, you have to comply with local land use zoning and regulations, which means the town of Northborough, just like you do for every other land use issue out there, you are able to regulate it reasonably so that you don't have incompatible uses, that you can have reasonable setbacks, reasonable limits on noise and dust and things of that nature. We do that for every other land use, and I understand that farms are a unique enterprise and have a unique piece of our history, but just so that we're clear, large-scale commercial composting operations like we're talking about, this is a solid waste facility, if it's not, if it weren't taking place on a farm, it'd be classified as a solid waste facility and have to go through DEP and comply with our local land use and zoning. Just because it's a farm, it's exempt, and fundamentally, this is not a historic farm activity. Farms have always composted, we get that, but they haven't brought in hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of materials to be composting, this isn't stuff that's being generated by, by the farms, it's stuff that's being brought in, and make no mistake about it, it's about money. There's a lot of money to be made in composting, and in our opinion, the board's opinion, has been at the detriment to the abutting residential properties. And I know you have focused in, on the worst offender that we have, 429 Whitney Street, S.A. Farms, but we have another large-scale composting operation up on Green Street that's run by Davidian Farms, that has had significant impacts on that neighborhood as well. And so, this legislation is designed to address all of that at the root cause, so that the town can come up with reasonable things. You wouldn't allow a commercial industrial building to be constructed that didn't have appropriate setbacks in drainage and all the things that we, we do through our zoning and our land use. This should, should not be treated any differently, in our opinion, so, just a little bit of context for folks, but we greatly appreciate the support, and this legislation, we have reached out, I've worked with the MMA again, and so...
They were helpful.
They were very helpful, they showed up, they provided testimony, statewide health agencies, and any other community that has composting issues, we've reached out. The reality is, Northborough was sort of the beta site and ground zero, so I don't know how much further it's really gone, because it's been sort of a stalemate fight here, and so, I don't know that there are a lot of other communities that have experienced the same issues that we have. If we are not successful in dealing with this constructively, I think that you'll see more communities with these types of issues, so.
Danielle?
Thank you. I just want to add really quickly, echoing what my colleagues had to say, and initially deferring to them, as both of these operations are taking place in a part of town, which I do not represent, however, having seen it sort of culminate and come to a head, have gotten on board, and putting the full effort of my office behind their efforts, and we'll do whatever we can to help, and apologize to the neighbors if you see someone driving through the neighborhood in the summertime, it's me.
To all of us.
I also want to thank John, because again, as to what the senator said, your efforts are the only reason that we've gotten as far as we have, because most towns would probably fight it and yell into the wind, and that's not what's happening here, it's very effective the way that you're dealing with it, and it's the only reason that anyone has gotten anywhere near as far as they have. I think we will continue, I know, to press for those regulations to be presented, and so that we can move forward regardless of what they say. At the same time, I would suggest to my colleagues that we submit a letter to the committee and ask for an early hearing, so that we don't come up at the same timing issue that we had last session. John's being very complimentary and positive in his outlook that it was because, it was because of the 11th hour, that the governor decided to veto this, but we had put a ton of work into it, and I think if we can get it started a little bit earlier this session, much like the education bill that we're talking about, I think that was also a matter of timing, I think we'll have more ability to have those conversations with the administration, and hopefully, so when we get it there again, because I have no doubt that we will, as we've gotten it there in the past, we can have, them have a better understanding of what exactly the challenges are of the neighborhood here and of the town, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Leslie?
Yeah, first of all, I would love to know what the concrete reasons were for his veto.
They don't have to give any.
Okay. That's what I thought. And...
We'll go with John's story.
Education and process, we just need more education and more process, and we'll get there.
And as far as timeline, you had begun to talk about the fact that there would be another hearing, like the one we went to in Foxborough.
I think the first thing that we have to do if we put, set this in order, is that I think that your legislative delegation, one of whom is missing here tonight, but who will join us, should write a letter, as suggested, to the chairs, the co-chairs of the joint committee that will hear this, and that should be done tomorrow. I mean, we shouldn't wait any longer than that.
Agreed.
So, we will start that letter, and we will get you to sign on to it. The second thing that has to be done is to make sure that we can get that early hearing as fast as we possibly can, and I, is there possibility perhaps of maybe doing some presentations here of where, you know, what this impact has been?
Oh, I could, you want, I could do it right now, I got a presentation, I get the slides, we can go right to it now.
I also thank Leslie, to answer your question on a more basic level, committees have already started having hearings, so...
Just begun, though, last week.
That's great to know.
Just begun, so we will try to get them, get this in as quickly as possible.
John?
Through the chair, if I may make a request.
Sure.
It was, it's detrimental to us if that hearing takes place in Boston, if it could take place in the area, one, I'm sorry, the DAR hearings I'm thinking of, but if there's any way that it can be done closer...
There would be no DAR hearings.
No, no, I understand, but if there's any way that we can...
Committee hearing.
Something a little bit more convenient, one of the things I've heard from the residents is very difficult for them to get in and out of Boston.
All right, let's see if we can do it.
I don't know if that's possible.
The problem is getting, getting everybody there, but let us see, let me talk, some of them are here tonight, and I will talk and, talk to them and see what's possible, what's best for you, what's easiest for you. We can always use the fish and game headquarters over.
We'll find a site, if it's possible for you to have the hearing here.
The problem is, it's, it's not necessarily, they're not necessarily going to do a single, a hearing for this single bill, it'll be multiple bills.
It'll be...
And so, there's other, other interest groups on those bills, I mean, Janet Kason will probably have 25 at that hearing, it, so it's...
The Westboro site works well, we've been there.
We'll make the request.
It works, let's see if we can do that.
We just ask.
Yeah, you can just ask.
Then we'll get back to you with, with the date.
Thank you.
As soon as we find out, and you've been wonderful about coming, I mean, you've just been wonderful, and that makes a difference, and if you, at your earliest convenience, if you could pass a resolution from your Board of Selectmen, I think that would be helpful as well.
Yeah.
Danielle, next meeting.
Okay. And if you can bring, make sure you bring your health agent with you. She, she, they were, she was excellent, absolutely excellent.
So, we've gone a little longer than anticipated, but if the residents have a pertinent question, anybody that would like to speak? Anybody else? No?
Just like to say, I am so grateful for all of your efforts, and I think one of the themes that has come across is that with any of these issues, whether it's revenue stream, transportation, education, it's, you have made it clear that we're all in this together, and...
We are. I mean, I don't think anybody was more upset or disappointed than I was when, on the last day of the session, they had it for 10 days by that time, it was almost as though, I'm not going to go with this, I'm getting looks from John, and I know what he's saying, he's got to fight another battle this year, and, you know, so let's leave it at that.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Good for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Always a...
Okay. Pass the hour of 7:20 PM, Adele Solomon of Boston Flair Incorporated doing business as Athens Pizza. Consider an application submitted by Adele Solomon of Boston Flair Incorporated doing business as Athens Pizza for common victualer and entertainment license for premises located at 292 Main Street. The representative, if you'll come up, get to take the stairs. I'm getting out of here somehow.
Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a change of ownership, nothing else is changing, everything else is remaining the same?
I'm not going to change anything, except for the quality of food and service.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing no questions, do I hear a motion?
Did you have a question, Lisa?
Well, just real quickly, can you tell us a little bit about your menu?
I'm not going to change the menu a lot, you know.
Okay, stay, stay the same?
Almost the same.
Okay.
The only thing I'm going to change is the service and the quality of the food.
I'm sorry?
The only thing I'm going to change is that the quality of the service and the food.
Okay.
Great.
Do I hear a motion?
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to grant a common victualer license and an entertainment license to Adele Solomon of Boston Flair Incorporated doing business as Athens Pizza, her premises located at 292 Main Street, with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the Building, Fire, and Health Departments.
Second.
Motion's remain second in any discussion, hearing none, all is in favor. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm going to really slander... And I'm going to really slander this name. Massacer Aldarachan In-House Coffee Inc., to consider an application as submitted by Massacer Aldarachan In-House Coffee Incorporated for a common victular and entertainment license for premises located at 17 West Main Street. Do you want to say your name?
My name is Julia, and my husband and I, we started this business over 10 years ago, and we have a lot of experience. Well, he has much more experience than me. He's in this business for like over 25 years, and he passed a lot of his knowledge to me. And I'm an adventurer, I'm always taking it to the next level. And we did like our own way, different than the donut business before. And we are very happy to say that we are very successfully having this business for 10 years on Shusbury Street in Worcester. And we are thrilled when we had an opportunity finally to be a part of this community, which we're looking forward to a long, long, long time. And when we see that lovely location of Shadow Pharmacy, we jumped into it, and we're very thrilled to be at the end of this finish line, right? It was a very tough road, but we're almost done, we're almost there, and we're looking forward to be the part of the community.
And when are you looking to open up?
So we basically have like a little lost things with the fire department, which we didn't know, but everything is ready, so we're passing the last inspections. Firefighters going through inspection, building department, and that's it. And we have health department, everyone's very helpful over here, so we're almost done.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Leslie? I'd just like to hear more about your business.
Absolutely. So like about model of the business, or the product, what exactly? Everything?
Sure. Just a description of what your business is, and what you offer, what you, what you're...
So it's a coffee shop, it's not a donut shop. We're a little bit more like European style, with nice bakeries, we have a lot of big variety of coffees, non-coffees. And I'm a big health, I would say enthusiast, right? I believe in donuts that are already behind us, and the coffee the traditional way. I love smoothies and healthy drinks, and lots of healthy, healthy stuff, right? I'm always searching on YouTube and everything, and looking for healthy ideas and pastries, not just pastries to me, right? I want to do like something healthier way, where I'm always looking through nutrients and like multi-grains, and more health impact, right? Vitamins and gluten-free is very trending, right? And we have a lot of things that committed into it right now. So on top of the coffee, big variety, we have teas, smoothies, what else, I'm forgetting? Dessert's a big thing, and that was like my hope here, because I feel like town is so beautiful, and the neighborhood is phenomenal, but what happened to the nightlife? I said, let's stay like Shusbury Street, you know? We are so like, I feel like it's such a beautiful atmosphere, when every family sometimes at the dinner would have a, like grab your wife, husband, right? And like have, sit, pass kids to somebody, and like have a nice dessert with a cup of coffee, and have like a little date. So that's what we're looking forward, like very, we, behind our name In-House Coffee, we're trying to put the idea of very homey feeling. And I'm always, when hiring employees, I'm telling that we are in-house coffee. That feeling of the place has to be like home, for the employees, for the customers. It's a homey, beautiful feeling. So of course, service, we're very picky with our employees. I'm always trying to dig through everyone to find that pearl that would deliver our idea, our ways of running business, with big respect and professionalism.
Sounds wonderful. And how much seating will you have in there?
About 20, right?
20?
It's small, not as big as, but we're happy.
Thank you, sounds wonderful.
And what are your hours of operation?
So I'm looking, right now, as what I say is what I say, we're new, and I'm hoping I'm going to be super busy, but I want to open at 6:00 in the morning until 9:00 afternoon, and we'll see, right? Probably 6:00 AM till 9:00 PM, hopefully.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to grant a common victular license and an entertainment license to Miaser Aldaroch. It was Miaser Aldaroch, that's how it's a license, it's Mohammed Yaser Aldaroch, that's full legal name. Wonderful. A in-house coffee for premises located at 17 West Main Street, with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, it's past the hour 7:30 PM. Hearing, to consider an application from Las Coates Incorporated doing business as Casa Velata, to change the manager of their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 45 Belmont Street, Route 9. Yes. And you are?
Griselda Brambilla de Ramos.
Okay. And so this is a change of manager?
Yeah.
And to receive tips training, I understand?
Yes, I did.
Okay. You did already do it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the background check was fine?
No questions. Detective Sergeant Griffin spoke to the guy over the meeting.
Yep. So, any questions from the board?
I just want to make a comment. I just think it's great that you've had so much experience, past 13 years at a similar restaurant in Connecticut owned by the same individuals who own this restaurant, so that's nice to know.
Yes.
As well. Thank you.
Hey. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Las Coates Inc., DBA Casa Velatar, to change the manager of their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license at 45 Belmont Street, Route 9, to Griselda Eloise Brambilla de Ramos.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience tonight. Yes.
Okay. Reports.
Julianne? So I just have two things to bring up tonight. One is that over the last few meetings, we have established a revised policy for appointments to committees, boards, and commissions. And I was happy to see that there's now a link on the town news and events, and, but the deadline to apply, if a person is interested in a position on a committee that does not have an official vacancy, is March 15th, which is this Friday, I think. And I was wondering if we could extend that, since it's a new process, it was only posted February 27th, and I think it would be, you know, a welcoming gesture to extend it through the end of the month, or at least another week.
Diane's not here tonight, but I, I'm not sure of the schedule of when this needs to be done for the annual reappointments, so I just can't speak to that. Had you mentioned that, I could have prepared, but I just don't know what the schedule is. We need to keep the schedule, so the board can make their appointments in a timely fashion for the year, so.
Well, this would allow applications to be considered, say, through the month of March. I don't, I, from what I understand, the appointments aren't officially made until the end of April.
Yeah. Diane unfortunately had to attend a week tonight, so she would have that information at her fingertips, so I'm, I just, I can't speak to it.
So could we take a vote pending, if it conflicts with a schedule that Diane has, or?
Not on the agenda, so taking a vote would probably not be appropriate. How does everybody else feel?
Leslie? Well, I think that, yeah, I feel like the information is just now starting to kind of percolate out there. And it'd be nice if it was, like you said, maybe through the end of March at least. Again, I don't know what it requires on Diane's part to make sure everything's done in time, I know that's the missing link here, but I feel like this is so new, and there are so many people that might be hopefully interested in things that...
But if I can suggest, we extend it through the end of March, provided it doesn't cause a scheduling issue. Again, I don't, I don't have any concern over it, other than keeping our schedule, that's all. We don't want to have a period of time where, if we're not prepared, then nobody gets reappointed, and then committees can't hold hearings and can't do what their task to do.
Right.
So, unless it causes a conflict?
By agreement?
Yeah, by agreement would be my suggestion.
By agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and the other thing I was, I'd like to discuss is town meeting. Town meeting is April 22nd, and are there some, can we make a concerted effort to publicize the date early on? Can we, for example, put it on the homepage?
We do.
In place of, maybe in place of recycling, or below recycling? And is it possible to get it in the town news email that some of us have signed up for, maybe Northborough Times? How, you know, we get to town meeting, and we want as many people to come as possible, but that will depend on how well we publicize, and make sure everybody knows the date.
John?
We always put it through town news, we always put it on the front of the website, we always get it out to the community advocate and the other newspapers, and we also always put message boards on Main Street, going both ways for weeks and leading up to it.
For how many weeks?
Typically for, for as long as we can. Those message boards, if they're not being used on a road project, they're out there usually for several weeks beforehand, letting people know that town meeting is coming up.
Well, you know, people are busy, and I think as soon as we can get that information out via any of those routes, including cable news, it would be beneficial. So that's just my plea.
Tim?
I just wanted to say thanks to the DPW for all the work, clearing the snow, and rain, and sleet, and ice, and all the other fun that we had the last couple of weeks. Nice end to the season, I thought it was appropriate, since last meeting we had the discussion about budgets, so it was nice to see that we had the funds available to pay for all that cleanup. And then, just to continue on with some of the comments that Selectman Hirsch were making, the town election is May 14th, and nomination papers are available online, if people are still interested in running for any elected positions within town. So those are all on the town website, and that's all, I'll head that to my report for tonight.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, Chief, I was wondering whether you could explain again the grant, I think the, is it the SCBA and RIT PACs?
Yeah, the AFG Grant.
Yes. I just think that's so worth mentioning, talking about again, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So for several years, we applied through FEMA for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, which is the AFG Grant. And we were trying to replace our aging self-contained breathing apparatus, our SCBAs. And it was on our CIP for six years, and it was actually coming due to be funded this year. And we were awarded $252,000 grant to the federal government through FEMA for those PACs. Now, we have a 12% cost share on those. And we had great support from our congressional, from...
Congressman McGovern's office.
Congressman McGovern's office actually wrote a letter supporting it, which is awesome for us. And we just received them a week and a half ago, we started training with them, and hopefully they'll be in service come, hopefully beginning of April. So we're really excited about it. We have 41 PACs, 82 bottles, and three RIT PACs. RIT PACs are one-hour bottles that allow us to go in and rescue down firefighters, retract fireplaces, and those PACs are specifically for that purpose. And they will work with any air PACs in the industry, there's special connection that will work on any air PACs. We work, our RIT team with Shrewsbury, with Westboro, with Marlboros, we're able to work with all of them, and they can come in and work with us, so we're very excited to be moving forward with that.
It's very exciting, congratulations. And I know Mike Borowitz was pretty instrumental in...
Mike did the immense work on that, without question. Mike is a part-time, he's a part-time employee for me that does full-time work, because I keep throwing stuff at him. He's our hazmat assistant, he also assists with ambulance billing, assists with the LEPC, assists with our emergency planning, and does most of our grant running. And then he was assisted by a couple of captains who worked with him as well. All I had to do was look at the N and say, yeah, looks good to me, and sign it, and so it did an outstanding job, we're really excited about it.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much, and pass along our, thank you to him as well. Thank you. I attended the Regional School Committee meeting on February 27th. My primary reason was to see both of the interviews that took place. Jonetta Choi was unable to complete her term, so there were two individuals who interviewed to fulfill the rest of her term until May. And the Regional School Committee voted in Sean O'Shea, and I'm sure he will do a wonderful job, I would like to congratulate him. And the superintendent also did her budget presentation, and the principal gave an excellent monthly report. She's pretty amazing with that, actually. Her reports are three or four pages long, single-spaced, typed pictures, I've seen them, they're amazing. And she tries to talk as fast as she can, but she takes a good 15, 20 minutes to go through these reports. So I just wanted to congratulate them, and they really do a wonderful job there, and she does a super job with what she's trying to do with the kids there. Along with Selectman Perro, I attended the new Habitat Home at the old Cyrus Gale Store, right across from the library. That was a fantastic morning, because in addition to the coffee and donuts, there was a nice crowd. Senator Eldridge was there, Danielle Gregoire was there, and they both spoke, as did Rickleaf. The family was there, some of their aunts, uncles, and cousins, and so forth, we got to know the family very well. It's a really, really wonderful family, I have to say, they're very excited, and the home is beautiful, I can't say enough about how it looks. Really fantastic build that they did, so that's a wonderful project that we should all be very, very proud of. And, let's see, I guess the last thing I wanted to mention was, yeah, I think we've come a long way as far as the, what the town does show for boards, committees, and commissions. And if you go to the town website and click on Boards and Committees on the left, it takes you to the Boards, Committees, and Commissions page. The first thing it says is click here to access the Board and Committee Information Center, and below that is the application for town government. And as you proceed, and you click on Boards and Committees, you get a list of all the vacant terms, you can see where all the vacancies are, and you can also click on expiring terms, and that lists who's up and when. So there's really a ton of information in here now, and I think it's terrific, so I wanted to thank whoever...
Diane and MIS.
Diane and MIS, David Kane, maybe was involved with that? Okay. So that's wonderful, so thank you very much. That's my report.
Jason?
Yes, just to note what Leslie mentioned about the key ceremony, the key presentation ceremony for 37 Main Street. Just happy to have attended that, it was very, wasn't the greatest weather day, but it was certainly a very enjoyable time during the ceremony. I just want to thank Habitat for Humanity, Rickleaf, and Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, the Community Preservation Committee, and the students of Asbury Valley Regional High School, who were very important contributors to the construction work that was done on that project. In addition to what they call the usual suspects, or the regulars, and some gentlemen who fill their time by coming to this project and working throughout these, and doing a lot of great work. So it was just a great ceremony, we congratulate the family for their new home, which they themselves helped to do the work on. On Thursday, March 7th, we had another meeting of the Master Plan and Steering Committee, where the committee is continuing to go through its recommendations and review. The committee will be coming up with yet another public survey, which will be online, so stay tuned for notice about where that survey is located. You'll be trying to gather more information, and to some extent identify priorities from the community members as to the recommendations that are being presented. Let's see. The Northborough Free Library, 150th Anniversary Jubilee, being held April 6, 2019, at the Haven Country Club, just up the street off Church Street, continuing into Boylston. Tickets are $75 per person. Festivities, cocktails start at 6:30 PM, dinner at 7:30 PM, and then from 8 to 11:30 PM, you have Dancing with the Party Factor Band. So you can go to the town website for the Northborough Free Library, there'll be kind of a click-through link to get to the online ticket purchase and RSVP. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
Just for everybody to know, that Fire Station Building Committee is having a meeting with the financial groups and this board... meeting with the financial groups and this board on April 4th at 7:00 PM at the library. If you're interested in hearing about the new fire station, then that's the time to come and see it before town meeting. So that concludes my report. Thank you, John.
No report.
Okay. Public comments. Yes?
I just have a one question about the Habitat for Humanity. Both of those buildings are completed and both families, is it one family in each one?
There's two families in each one.
It's four units.
Is it four units?
Four units in the two buildings. I believe so.
Yes.
They're occupied.
I didn't think about that for a second. Yes. And they're amazing.
Thank you. New business. Close town meeting warrant. John?
In your packet is an updated copy of town meeting warrant. Again, it's still a draft. There are still blanks in several places and it's still subject to change. The point of this evening is to close the warrant and then we will complete it until council will review. We did receive two additional citizen petitions today. One is to remove the requirement that people shovel the sidewalks in front of their house and the other is a zoning amendment, which I haven't even had a chance to look at yet.